It's almost 7 o'clock. We'll open the meeting up. Let's get some bills done first here. Hold on, we've got some minutes still we've got to kick around?
Yeah, just two. Two need for...
July 10th. Everybody, anybody have a chance to read the minutes over? Meeting of... Meeting of... July 10th. Oh, always right, there we go. What's that? April 13th. And? From the minutes of Monday's meeting, April 13th. And corrections, changes? What year was that?
2015.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes over Monday, April 13th. Anybody have one?
I have a motion to accept the minutes of April 13th, 2015.
Wait, second? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
I did aye now when I looked at it at the time.
Okay. You win? You wrote aye. So that was Kasaya, myself, Peter, and Mr. Dergan.
Wow, he's very efficient.
Very efficient. See, who's who, see who? Hold on, what do we have, the mail correspondence and whatnot?
Um, what is it? Most, just having to do with tonight's meeting. But, um... There's a site plan and plenty of work. Decision letter from Boris Lekman to Jennifer Cho. Here is a miss letter.
From Boris Lekman from what? We have a good 10 minutes before we get going anyway. Hey, Rich, white?
Good, how are you?
Good. Seeing it's close to 7:15, we're definitely going to be rolling on this. Okay, has everybody had an opportunity to see, review the responses and whatnot from the different parties and whatnot? Mr. Huxham, you have also in response to the different appeals and opinions from both sides? Have you had a chance?
I reviewed the both and I submitted, I sent an email on Friday. And if you'd like me to comment, I'd be happy to.
Okay, yes, yes, why don't you do that? I appreciate the comments.
Just want to mention that I've... Just so you know, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I watched the video and reviewed the minutes. So I'm up to date on the situation. Just sorry to interrupt you.
Awesome. And also set some ground rules too. There isn't any, all questions, responses and everything will come through the board. So we're not going to have arguments and discussions between one another. So, yes, Mr. Hux, why don't you rush that off?
You'd like me to go first?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I reviewed the memorandum from the attorneys for the other two parties. In my opinion, it's the same. In my opinion, the project doesn't comply with the one building per lot and the 150-foot frontage requirements. I think that there's something that's a little bit different in Halifax from some other towns. Some other towns have provisions that give a special permit granting authority, the ability to, whether you want to use the word "waive" or "vary," provisions of the zoning bylaw. Under certain provisions, under certain circumstances, if a certain standard is met. Not only does Halifax not do that, but it has specific provisions in the zoning bylaw that say that the grant of a special permit only is authorization for a use, for the use involved. And that the grant of the special permit does not affect the obligation of the property, the project, to comply with other provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply. So, in my opinion, the 150-foot frontage requirement is one of those provisions in the one building per lot. And in particular, the party trust's argument to me seems to, as I read it, seems to indicate that they're saying that there really isn't any frontage requirement that applies to a project like this. And that is not, in my opinion, a reasonable reading of the zoning bylaw. That no frontage requirement applies. When you have a clear statement in the zoning bylaw that there's 150-foot frontage requirement in the AR zone. So that's a summary of my opinion on the matter. I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Sure. Thank you. Well, I think that's basically the crux of the matter right there. That's pretty much the bottom line lesson. And as a board, I think we should address those two issues. I think we should look at them by definition, according to our bylaws. And I think we should look at it as to what the party trust has applied for. I'll turn to the building inspector. Well, exactly what have they applied for? What is, are these, by our definition, these are six duplexes.
Six single-family duplexes applied for under the multifamily development. Not to be confused with a multifamily dwelling. By no means a multifamily dwelling. A multifamily dwelling would be three or more units. These are all one and two unit, two family units separated.
And by our definition, it meets that criteria of two single-family dwellings.
Well, they're single-family dwellings, six duplexes.
Okay. Now, as far as the, there's six buildings. And what are they being built on? I mean, as far as lot coverage. How many lots are we talking?
As far as I'm concerned, in my opinion, it's one lot.
It's one lot?
Six buildings on one lot.
Okay.
It's in common ownership.
Common ownership, meaning the definition of, what was that, 167... Damn.
Well, definition of a lot in our bylaw is a single area of land in one ownership. One ownership, defined by meets and bounds or boundary lines, may record a deed or record a plan. Definition of one ownership. There's an undivided ownership by one person or by several persons, whether the nature is joint, in common, or entirely. Condominium, a form of ownership or a development so characterized in which an individual owns separately one or more single-dwelling units, all commercial spaces, in a multi-unit building or complex. The owners of the individual units have an undivided interest in the common areas, facilities that serve the project. The common areas include such items as land, roof, floors, main walls, stairways, lobby, hall, parking spaces, and community and commercial facilities.
Okay then, so by definition, we have six buildings.
On one lot.
On one lot. Now, is that, let me ask you this, as far as you know, because you saw the application process and whatnot. Is there a deed that backs that up or substantiates that or?
I did talk to Attorney Mayo, which was referenced at the last meeting. I did not talk zoning with Attorney Mayo, that was not the intent. The intent was to make sure that there was a proper master deed for a condominium complex in one ownership.
And is there one?
As far as he was concerned, after we did some tweaking, yes.
Okay. Now, as far as occupancy permits go, under the one, under the master deed, so that they do maintain and complete the definition as followed?
He will not receive final occupancy until the master deed is required.
Okay.
And I'd just like to comment on it. Attorney Huxham, we're saying one building per lot. Are we citing specific use regulations or general density use regulations? Because there's conflict between those two definitions.
I'll ask him. Mr. Huxham?
I believe I cited the specific provision in the memo that I submitted to you. If you could just give me a second, I will answer that. What I was citing was section 167, 7D2.
7D2A?
Yes.
So 7D2A says this requires that any multifamily development complex, and my opinion of complex is similar buildings, more than one, on one individual lot. The codes here on the shell locate each building, by definition, each would be more than one, two or more buildings on an individual lot, a lot in common ownership, which shall have continuous frontage on a public or private real.
Ian?
That doesn't change my opinion about that provision. I think it's pretty clear. Says each building on an individual lot. This is all one lot with six buildings on it.
But if they're not individual lots, this is one lot. I don't... I'm not getting the connection.
Shall locate each building on an individual lot. The six buildings. I read that as saying that each of those buildings should be on an individual lot. But you still have the frontage issue, even without this issue. I mean, we can go one for this one first and then the second, but you still have the minimum frontage, 150 feet of frontage.
Okay, then I don't understand it. I don't understand how Twin Lakes and our other condominium complex behind Cumberland Farms, those are not individual lots. Those are...
I'm not familiar with those projects.
Basically, I mean, any condominium complex, it's, they're not subdivided. They're multiple buildings on a single lot registered as a master deed to the association. So what am I missing out on?
That just may be, I'm not familiar with those other projects, but this might just be the way the board has interpreted the bylaw. I'm looking at this particular project as these facts. And I read this as stating it pretty clearly that each building is supposed to be on an individual lot. But again, even, you know, not even considering that, you still have the 150-foot minimum frontage requirement.
Well, what about the frontage requirements on the multifamily complex?
Well, it's confusing at best. Frontage requirement. We've got Article 4 in the bylaw, which is defined in the title of Article 4 as the dimensional and density regulations. That's its type. It's broken down into 167-10, general density. 167-11, table of dimensional and density regulations. 167-12, specific use density regulations. In my opinion, because Article 4 specifically references dimensional and density regulations, and the table of 167-11 mentions dimensional and density regulations, it's hard to find a specific multifamily development frontage regulation in 167-11, but there is language in 167-10 and 167-12, which one specifically applies? Well, 167-12 says it only has to have continuous frontage. It doesn't state what length of frontage. If you look at 167... 12 again, I believe. 167-12 has different language than 167-10. It says, 167-12 a... The minimum front yard dimensions required following table of dimensional and density regulations have to be measured from the street line, where if land on street is on fire, will do registry deeds.
167-3 specifically defined the minimum frontage requirement in regards to the principal building located on the lot, I believe.
Well, 167-10, under general, says the frontage of a lot, shall we measure distance between the points of intersection of a side lot line along the streetway away? See 167-3, the diagram showing the means of measuring the minimum frontage dimension, and it has a little notation 3. And it is no, said diagram is with the definition of front yard, side, side, and rear, under definition of yard, front, side, and rear. That leaves an open area unstructured from the ground to the sky between the respective street, side, and rear lot lines and the principal building or structure on a lot. Principal building to me would suggest one building with accessory sheds, whatnot, on a Form A lot or structure on a lot, except otherwise provided herein. You'll see a lot of language on these definitions and wording in here, except otherwise provided in herein. What does that reference? Well, here's, we have a plan, a multifamily development plan that went before all the boards in the town. It was approved through all the boards in the town. It was specifically approved through the fire department for ingress and egress. He could make it with all his apparatus, and he could make it with his wheelbase 40 platter truck. All that was addressed. He said that it was okay for life safety issues. We had to put 911 addresses on them. We had to give it a name. We had to give the numbers, the house's number or the dwelling's numbers for 911 purposes. So it requires a special permit, which gets looked at through all the boards. And in my opinion, it's met the requirement.
How about the planning board, if you recall? Exactly, you know, what was applied for versus what was approved by the planning board?
I'm going to hear the comment from the planning board.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
No, they met the front, the roadway. They met that for that, for the complex, yes. Would, where did it need the 150 foot? I don't understand that.
That's, that's what beat the question.
They came in, all the material that for two meetings, for the front part of the roadway to get in. Everybody was okay with it. We voted on. Why does every build, each building needs 150 foot frontage?
Well, that's, that's the question. Yeah, that's the question. Yes, sir.
I can't, I can't possibly see that the town that has stringent requirements for multifamily developments would allow for a single-family house to have 150, 150 feet of frontage and 12 units to have 150 feet or none frontage. That doesn't, that doesn't make any sense to me. We grappled with the individual lot situation for a while. As a matter of fact, I think we asked them to go get separate plans, which they came back with, which I think he had mentioned, I'm not sure, Brodsky, is that what it is, Attorney Brodsky?
My name's Adam Brodsky.
Had mentioned that they had actually filed with the registered deeds with those specific lots that they never followed through with. So like I, my big fear, I understand that they've done all this stuff, and I get that. And this is a very difficult situation. But my fear is, in a town where we have pretty specific and stringent rules for multifamily development, they want, if somebody wanted to build a duplex on one lot or two lots, one of two acres, they would have to follow all of this stuff and all of the other bylaws. If we allow one multifamily of 12 units in an area of town that has none, that we brought up before, it doesn't make a whole, and I know we're going back to the special permit, which is not what we're talking about, we're talking about the building permits. So the building permits were given, without that, I cannot understand how a town would, the understanding would be that they can have whatever frontage they want, and that would be the understanding. I don't think that's rational.
Well, I think...
And I want to find a solution for this, I do.
Well, it's, I think, to answer that, and myself, when I was asking the same question, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I thought it's because there's a completely different criteria. I mean, look at Twin Lakes. Twin Lakes with all those condos up there, there's no way, shape, or form, each one of those condos has 150 feet of frontage. And they were all built after 76, when the new...
Yeah, and I don't know if they have variances from 1980 something.
See, that's what I mean, they stick to definitions, same thing with the condo complex behind Cumberland Farms. This certainly isn't 150 feet of frontage. And they are not on individual lots, right.
But they did have that conversation with us, and they did put them on individual lots, and it became an issue for them.
And I think it's my understanding too, with... And I think it's my understanding too, with the same thing when you have 12 units, I'm sorry, 6 units on 12 acres, that there's a, just like the condos, the rest of the condos in town, there's a master deed where the land, it's one lot technically, even though it's broken down into six lots, where there's going to be placement of six buildings, there's only one deed for the 12 acres.
Well, see, that's where I think it gets confusing, because when the Halifax Trails people came in, and they had the same question about, well, we have to get the other guys' land in with ours, and we can't get the permit until we have one ownership. I think the idea behind the bylaw is, and I was looking into this while I was watching all this before, the last meeting, it seems to me, prior to building, when they come in to...this is what the... and maybe somebody has a different thought process, but they need to have one ownership and one lot that has the number of acres of the number of units. After that, they need to go to the planning board and either get their subdivision thing or whatever and break up those lots, one building on each individual lot, because this town wants to have stringent requirements for multi-family development.
So the association will own six buildings on six lots as opposed to six buildings on one lot?
Maybe the duplexes or the three units in a complex would be of ownership of that building, but that's what the bylaw says.
By doing that, you're making a subdivision, and it's no longer a multi-family development.
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to point out that even if you put aside the one building per lot requirement, that in this situation, you have the larger parcel that only has 74 feet of frontage. So you could have a situation where the larger parcel had 150 feet of frontage or more, and perhaps then, you know, you could say, well, at least the larger parcel has the minimum amount of frontage. But in this situation, even the larger parcel only has 74 feet, like less than half. And without a subdivision roadway, that's it. That's all the frontage it has. That road that was never approved under subdivision control does not create any frontage. So this is a parcel that has 74 feet of frontage.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, and my name is Adam Brodsky. I represent the Party Trust. And I'll try and give you our perspective to try and answer your question. First, my understanding of the multi-family development bylaw is that the town was inundated with large condominium projects, and so it wanted to still encourage a mix of housing units and to have condominiums. And in fact, your bylaw specifically references condominiums with respect to multi-family. But it wanted to restrict the density, wanted to have less density. So it came up with a density requirement, which is one unit per 40,000 square feet. And the way you demonstrate to a board, and this is done in many towns, whether it's Norwell or Halifax, is you create what's known as a yield plan, where it's not a plan that you actually record with the Registered Deeds or get approved by the planning board under subdivision control. It's done for purposes of showing that you meet the density requirements. And the planning board actually requested that the applicant in this case do that. And so you see a plan that says lots on it, but that wasn't intended or required to have subdivision approval, to have a separate lot, and each dwelling on a separate lot. That was done to demonstrate to the planning board that had sufficient density, was not exceeding the density requirements. It just so happens that that plan, which is the plan that was approved by the ZBA and referenced in special permit, was recorded with the special permit. But if you take a close look at your bylaw, there's no requirement in your multi-family development bylaw that you actually have to go for subdivision approval of a subdivision to divide the property into lights, lots upon which you would then place an individual unit. And in fact, if you read the bylaw, it expressly talks about condominiums. You couldn't do that and have condominium ownership, which is the typical way that you own multi-family development, because you have a condo association that owns the common areas, including the road infrastructure, including the stormwater management, and all of the obligations are to the condominium association. Then you have individual unit owners. So if you were going to require someone proposing multi-family development that was going to get condominium, and you needed to divide this up into lots, it simply wouldn't happen. That's an unreasonable interpretation of your bylaw. With respect to frontage, and this is the problem with going back in time. You approved this special permit in 2015. As you all know, my clients relied upon that special permit, which wasn't appealed. It's now two and a half years later and a million dollars in investment. You've been out there, you've seen that the infrastructure has been built, there's a road, there are utilities, there are two units that are substantially, two buildings, I should say, that are substantially completed, two units each building, which is why, and neither Mr. Hudson nor Mr. Brackett have addressed the legal issue here, which is, should the board be allowing what's effectively a collateral attack on a special permit? But this is the problem, and I do want to speak to that issue at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, because I think that's the way out of this. And I've got another case, which I cited in my memorandum that I'd like to speak to. But that's the problem with going back in time. You don't recall, and it's not clear from the public record, what the board's interpretation was with respect to frontage. I can assure you, however, if you review the minutes, and specifically, I believe it was January 12, 2015, this exact issue was discussed by this board. The applicant's representative was asked the question about frontage. The applicant's representative made the argument, and we support the building inspector's interpretation. It's a reasonable interpretation, that with respect to multi-family development, there is no frontage requirement. And/or your bylaw is ambiguous and was interpreted that way back in 2015. We're entitled to rely upon that interpretation 2015. I should note that after all of those questions were asked, answered, Mr. Andrews attended, participated in those conversations. This board, in its judgment, knowing that there was a question raised with respect to frontage, granted the special permit without any requirement that we, for example, seek a variance for frontage. And so that's what this is really about, which is that Mr. Andrews, now two and a half years later, after participating... This is not a case where someone is surprised by this issue. After the board considers the issue of frontage, after the board issues its interpretation in 2015 of the bylaw, which as the building inspector suggested, is contradictory and somewhat ambiguous. Now, two and a half years later, a different constituent board is going to reinterpret the bylaw to the detriment of the applicant who has relied upon it. That's why you've got a very strict statute of limitations that prevents and discourages these kinds of collateral attacks. So again, I'd like to talk about that issue more clearly, because that's the way out of this mess, which is the owner should be put on the applicant, and that is the board should support the building inspector, deny the appeal, and if Mr. Andrews thinks he's still correct, put the issue in front of a judge and put the burden on him to prove that somehow, two and a half years later, he can raise the very same issues this board asked and answered.
Anybody else have questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just don't...
Hold on a second, please. Anybody else? Members of Jerry? Yes, Dan.
So first off, subdivisions and multi-family developments, two different handles. And we seem to be using them back and forth, and we can't, because the process for subdivision is different than multi-family development. Multi-family developments are condos or apartment units. By definition of the multi-family dwellings, I'm sorry, multi-family development, it's one piece of land. So we have a contradictory on 167-7D2A that says one building, one lot. That doesn't make any sense, because that's not what condo complex is, that's not what apartment complex is. So we need to go back at some point and put a definition of a subdivision versus multi-family development, and we need to tweak that, because that's obviously contradictory. And it's contradictory, not just to the definition, but also, I believe this is not ambiguous at all, and I don't believe anybody can have whatever frontage they want. I believe 167-12, which is density regulations for specific uses, multi-family development, overrides the schedule 167-11. Because if you read it on A5, it talks about the setback, it talks about the rear yardage, and it gives numbers for the feet between the buildings. And then further on, on 7C, it says, "Every multi-family development," which is one lot with multiple buildings on it, whether, and again, it says, "Whether condo or rental," it doesn't say condo, rental, or subdivision, right? "Condo or rental shall supply adequate frontage of each building for the fire apparatus to approach the building." That's telling me that the frontage is up to the discretion of the fire chief and any of the safety boards in town. So it is giving all the dimensions in this 167-12, which in my opinion overrides 167-11.
So back in 2015, if I understand it correctly, then when the board originally voted on it, we did have the opinion of the fire chief, the water police chief. It was crystal clear, which is why the permit was granted.
Because 167-12 is giving you all the other dimensions, and that, in its own line, talks about the frontage. I think we need to make it clear in the future. I think what they're trying to say is, there can't be one building behind another. They all have to have frontage.
Right.
But that frontage is, it says right here, is dictated by the safety...
Boarding, Jerry, any comments, questions?
Just a moment, what question? Was the building permit issued for the roadway and the infrastructure?
That's not involved in the building process.
So no permit was issued?
For the infrastructure?
For the roadway and the infrastructure.
The only requirement I would require, that the town requires, the state requires, is that they have water, that it goes to the water health, through sanitation, and it meets the requirements for housing.
And there's no inspections to go in and make sure that it's installed properly?
Other than the site plan review.
Site plan review.
It all has to be reviewed by the site.
It was just a question.
Robert, any questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Your name?
Yes, for the record, Gary Brackett, Attorney of Brackett Lucas, representing the board members in these appeals. Mr. Chairman, just in response to the building inspector's representation and Mr. Brodsky's, my client, in addition to the chronology I provided to you at the first hearing and the statement of legal elements, my client has advised me that on August 22, 2016, just about a year ago, there was a petition, 850, presented to the zoning board. The Party Trust was asking for a waiver of the bylaw, 167-72A, which Mr. Hudson cited to, the requirement that buildings be located on separate lots. So, Mr. Chairman, all this discussion about what was intended in terms of Mr. Brodsky and any misunderstanding on the part of the building inspector, a year ago, they were asking for a waiver of the requirement based on a plan that they submitted in support of the special permit. Now, from where I sit, that's essentially an admission on their part that that bylaw applies to this project. Now, my client has reminded me that you can have up to 10 units in one building in a multi-family development, but each building must be on a separate lot. Now, Mr. Chairman, at the first hearing, I pointed out in my statement of legal elements that your own bylaw, and this is a recognized form of statutory interpretation, where two or more requirements in the chapter, this is under 167-10, General Density Regulations, subsection A, where two or more requirements in the chapter are applicable to the same space, that which imposes the greatest restriction on the placement of the building will control. Well, in my supplemental statement, Mr. Chairman, I make reference to the fact that 167-12 governing multi-family development does not change the minimum frontage requirement of 150 feet, which Mr. Hudson presented in his comments, and it doesn't change the requirement under 167-72A that each building must be on a separate lot. So if the...what I find strange in terms of Mr. Brodsky's argument, no disrespect intended to him, is that your planning board and this board, in granting site plan approval and special permit approval, relied on this plan. And as I presented in the chronology, this isn't a question of an unknowing applicant. As I referenced, if we go back, we were all younger back in 2012, 2011, but on September 22, 2011, the Party Trust applied for definitive subdivision approval. That's six years ago. And on September 20, 2012, they withdrew. Now, my understanding is they withdrew in the face of what was going to be a denial of definitive subdivision approval, because it didn't meet the rules or regulations, or lots didn't have the proper furniture, and whatever number of reasons, but they withdrew rather than having a denial. Then apparently, there was some suggestion, they were going to pursue a 40B and put in something like 40-plus units. Well, that apparently received some preliminary approval from DHCD at the state level, but that never went forward. But rather than going back to the drawing board, and once again, Mr. Chairman, my understanding from my client and from Mr. Andrews Senior is that the projects you're talking about, the other projects that were referenced, where there might have been some reference to, I guess, Twin Lakes and other condo projects, those predate this zoning bylaw requirement. So we're talking about, whatever the issue is, the town may have recognized that it needed to tighten up their dimensional requirements for multi-family developments. So I find it difficult to understand, number one, when Mr. Andrews prepared his request for zoning enforcement, he cited all of these sections of the bylaw. There's no ambiguity whatsoever. Your bylaw is very clear. You have a table of dimensional regulations that clearly says 150 feet of frontage, 40,000 square feet for a lot, and a requirement that every dwelling be on a separate lot. Now, the other thing that I find interesting, and as I mentioned in my memorandum, Mr. Chairman, that's somewhat inconsistent with the building inspector's representation tonight, is if you look on the appeals of the building permit, you have the application for building permit, and then you have the building permits for the four lots that are under appeal. On the application for units seven and eight, the street address is 264 Elm Street. They're using that as the address for units seven and eight. They use that as the address for units one and two. Well, as Mr. Hudson has said, there's only 74 feet of frontage on Elm Street. You don't have enough frontage to build a single-family house, let alone the four units. But then, Mr. Chairman, somehow or other, those addresses on the application are converted in the building permits. The building permit cites unit 7, 9 Amanda's Way. Amanda's Way doesn't exist. Unit 8, 11 Amanda's Way. Unit 1, 2 Amanda's Way. Unit 2, 4 Amanda's Way. Mr. Chairman, and with respect to the issue of no requirement for frontage, which Mr. Brodsky is making, well, if he looks at his own client's applications for building permit, there's a question as to the amount of frontage on the application form. The frontage for units seven and eight is listed simply as 100-plus. Well, from where I sit, 100-plus is less than 150. And regarding units one and two, the frontage is 140-plus or minus, which still falls below the 150-foot requirement. So, Mr. Chairman, any suggestion by the Party Trust tonight through council that there's no frontage requirement for each individual building frankly is undone by their own applications for building permits. It's undone by the plan they filed with the planning board for site plan and this board for special permit. And it's undone by the fact that a year ago, they came in and asked for a waiver of the one lot, one building requirement. Now, from where I sit, those admissions, taken together, establish the fact, as Mr. Hudson was identified, and as he commented at the last hearing, that these are two very simple questions. The question I have is, when the Party Trust decided to go with a six-building development, why didn't they go back to the planning board as they went to originally six years ago? When they filed the applications for building permits in November of 2016, one thing I haven't heard, frankly, Mr. one thing I haven't heard, frankly, Mr. Chairman, from the building inspectors, he waited six months to issue the building permits. Now, I know from some of the correspondence we've received that Mr. Mayo initially said, while there isn't enough evidence of supportive frontage or whatever, he would not agree to it. Apparently, there was some suggestion that a use of a master deed would somehow or other establish individual lots. Well, Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Huxham's been doing this for a while, but Mr. Brody's been doing this for a while, as I have. I don't think you can create six lots by a master deed and forget about definitive subdivision approval. That's within the purview of the planning board. If I were to walk out tonight and create a master deed for some piece of property, that doesn't absolve me of coming before the regulatory boards of the town of Halifax.
Mr. Huxman, so is subdivision approval required necessarily in this specific instance?
No, not, it's not strictly required. In my opinion, the reason that we keep talking about subdivision approval is because, first, because of the frontage issue. Because you look at a piece of parcel like this, and in most towns, you would have a subdivision roadway that would create frontage for lots. And so, in a situation like this where the entire large parcel only has 74 feet of frontage where 150 is required in the AR district, the simplest logical way to create frontage is to have a subdivision, definitive subdivision plan approved with a definitive subdivision roadway. In my opinion, that frontage under the Halifax zoning bylaw has to be on either a public way or on a subdivision roadway for purposes of this situation. So it doesn't strictly require, there's no provision in the bylaw that says, and then you go get subdivision approval. But that would be the most logical way to create frontage where there is insufficient frontage, in my opinion, currently.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to respond to Mr. Brackett's remarks. It's not unusual for a project to change over a period of years. So first, there was a subdivision proposed and considered that was withdrawn. Then there was a thought of a 40B comprehensive permit. They went down that road and ultimately banned it, I believe at the urging of the town, that didn't want to see a 40B there. And then they proposed a multifamily development, which is permitted by a special permit. Nothing unusual about that. My clients did come in about a year ago because they wanted to change.
Some of the locations of the buildings? The style?
The style of the building. They got bad advice, and so they went down the wrong permitting road. But they withdrew that, and this board allowed that withdrawal without prejudice. Those aren't admissions of liability. With respect to the building permit application, this is difficult stuff. So it's not unusual for a local boulder to perhaps not fill in the correct numbers with respect to frontage. We're having a very sophisticated conversation regarding what is required, what is a frontage in this particular instance. Those aren't admissions that somehow should be held against these people. They've done everything the town has asked them to do in order to move this project forward. And I respectfully suggest that the bylaw is not clear as the building inspector himself has said. This is a tough call. But as I said, I think it's inappropriate for this board to be reviewing what the parbore did. And at the appropriate time, I would like just two minutes to speak to that issue.
Anybody else have any more questions from the board? Well, questions, where do we go from here?
So, Mr. Chairman, would you entertain us two minutes on the legal issue?
Yes, I will.
And again, it's important and hasn't been addressed by the other parties. I gave you at the last time copies of Bonfatti and Sutula. There are a number of cases that speak specifically to this. I found another decision, I thought it was just helpful. It's Coalesse versus Cohasset ZBA. It's a 2009 land court case, it's a trial court case. And I do have copies because I think it's just very, very helpful. And it's interesting because I think it speaks directly to the legal issue in front of you. I also think it's interesting because Mr. Huxman's firm is town counsel for the town of Cohasset and took the position in that case that an abuser's appeal of an enforcement matter was.
Give the other copy, two ones to the building inspector also, please.
Yes, sorry. So just briefly, in that case, property owner was granted a special permit to Cohasset to convert a three-bedroom home to a four-bedroom. That was not appealed. Two years later, a plaintiff, a butter, requested the building inspector take enforcement, claiming that they actually needed a variance and not a special permit to do that work. The building inspector rejected the request for enforcement. It was appealed to the zoning board of appeals. The board of appeals denied that a request for enforcement went to the land court. And the property owner that had the special permit and the town both sought the dismissal of the abuser's appeal, arguing that there was a strict statute of limitations, they had 20 days in which to appeal, and that the use of enforcement, and in this case, there's a request for enforcement and also an appeal of the building permit, and the building permit is addressed in both the Bonfatti and Sutula case. But it's essentially a collateral attack by the abuser, two years after the applicant had been given a special permit, arguing so into this case that, well, they didn't have frontage, they need a variance in order to vary the frontage requirements for this permit. Justice Long kicked the case right out of court on a motion to dismiss that was supported and argued by the town, as well as the homeowner. And this is the important takeaway, and there's some great quotes, but this is Justice Long quote, "Whether this was the correct decision and whether the ZBA overlooked crucial information in coming to such a decision can only be addressed in a timely general laws, Chapter 48, Section 17, appeal." That is, even if the ZBA got it wrong, that in fact, that applicant required a variance to do, it doesn't matter because the abuser had noticed the action similar to this case, didn't appeal the special permit within the 20-day period. And the judge's reasoning, and basically, is what we're arguing here, is that, you know, we have expectations as a party that's received not only a special permit from this board, but site plan approval, you know, fire department approval, water department approval. We had all of our approvals. We have an expectation that we can reasonably rely upon the permits that were granted. And in fact, we did that and invested close to $1 million. And we're now, what, halfway through the project? Two-thirds of the way through the project? And so I respectfully suggest that if you're looking for an appropriate way out of this mess, that you deny the appeal of the building permit, deny the, again, supporting the building inspector's denial of the matter, denial of enforcement. And if you want to put the onus upon Mr. Andrews to go to land court, fine, well, we'll deal with land court because I would hope that Mr. Huxman's firm would support us just as it did for this party in Cohasset.
Yes, sir.
Just very briefly, yeah. That case, in my opinion, is distinguishable. It was a completely different situation. If I considered this to be just a collateral attack on the special permit, I'd be in complete agreement because it's obviously far past the 20-day appeal period. In Halifax, you guys have a couple of provisions that specifically state that a special permit issued hereunder is only an authorization for a specific use with stated conditions. And then there's another one that says basically the same thing. A specific use, the 150-foot frontage requirement is a dimensional requirement. This is a fundamental distinction in zoning, difference between use and difference between dimensional requirements. So, you know, there was no provision like that in that case.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I'll take two minutes. First of all, for your information, I know Attorney Brodsky has mentioned a million-dollar investment. In 1987, the SJC, in the case of Dinsky versus Framingham, found the town was immune from liability because of a mistake by the building inspector. And that immunity was embodied in the public duty provision of Chapter 258, Section 10, the Mass Tort Claims Act. So the permitting process, whether it's zoning, planning, conservation, board of health, all of those decisions, board of the building inspector, all those decisions are immune in the event a mistake was made. Your insurance company, if a suit was filed by Mr. Brodsky, would file a motion to dismiss citing 258, Section 10. So put aside for a moment the million-dollar investment because there's a very basic saying in dealing with public officials. It's a little bit like the equivalent of buyer beware. When you go before a public official for permits, you have to understand, number one, public officials are immune from liability for wrong decisions. I'm not saying there was any mal-intention here, but there may be wrong decisions, just an error in interpretation of zoning bylaw. None of us are perfect, not even those of us who practice municipal law. So that's important for you to know. I just, Mr. Huxman's already addressed the question. Mr. Brodsky, I did address in paragraph C of my supplemental memorandum, I raised this the last issue. Andrews' appeals do not constitute appeals from the special permit. 167-12 says multifamily use is allowed by a special permit. Your table of use regulations says multifamily use is allowed by a special permit. We're not challenging the special permit, which Mr. Brodsky keeps trying to paint a broad brush and suggests deny the appeals, put the burden on the client. In fact, what you should do is grant the appeals, determined based on the advice of Mr. Huxman, as experienced land use counsel, that there has been an oversight in this part by the applicant. He hasn't done the required checkoff. He sought relief a year ago from the required checkoff. His own applications recognize there's a frontage requirement for each lot. But he hasn't met the frontage requirement, as Mr. Huxman has said. So I suggest that you grant the appeals, bring this project to a halt, tell Mr. Brodsky to tell his clients to go back and do it the right way, as they started doing six years ago. When he suggests, well, we've been at this for two and a half years, you're being asked to rethink a previous decision? No, you granted a special permit as to use only, as Mr. Huxman said. But in the language of your special permit and in the language of the planning board's site plan approval, it clearly says the applicant has to meet all other provisions of your bylaw and all other rules and regulations, which include 4181U, the subdivision control law, your planning board's subdivision regulations, and all the other requirements. So I suggest, Mr. Chairman, that based on the advice of Mr. Huxman, you have a clear indication that the applicant has not done something correctly. That the building inspector in issuing the building permits apparently didn't address that issue. We have brought it to his attention by the appeals of the four permits and request of zoning enforcement, both of which have been denied. But hopefully, Mr. Chairman, you and the members will have heard tonight, and frankly, I'll bring up one last issue. At the last hearing, they raised the question, they began doing work on the building permits before the 30-day appeal period had run. Well, that's their risk, Your Honor. Like most parties, if they get a building permit, the conservative approach, wait for the 30 days. Or if you get a special permit, that you wait for the 20-day appeal period. You're not going to start working on a special permit tomorrow. If you got the permit tonight, you'll wait until the appeal period runs. So any hardship that they have basically suffered to this point is self-inflicted. They didn't get the definitive subdivision approval as required because even though the language isn't in the bylaw, as Mr. Huxman has said, the logical conclusion that to establish 150 feet of frontage for each lot and one lot for each building is you have to have separate lots, thereby, you need a subdivision approval plan, which is what apparently the applicant was telling the boards in town that they already had. Otherwise, why didn't they submit a plan to this board showing one lot with six buildings when the special permit was granted? They didn't do that. So I think you relied on their representation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Row, if you had your hand up.
Well, just figured I'd throw this out there. I keep hearing about 150 feet of frontage. Well, the mere fact is, even if it was under subdivision control, you don't need 150 feet to put the road in. Their intention was not to create frontage because they're not subdividing lots. They're not, they can put a road in under subdivision control, and they don't need 150 feet. Did they meet the intent of subdivision control? I believe they met that intent, which means.
Did the plaintiff also believe their intent was the same thing? As far as meeting the requirement?
As far as meeting the requirement, sure. There's nothing that says you need 150 feet to put a road in. They put a road in to access the 12 acres. Their intent was never to subdivide it. So if their intent is not to subdivide, why would they need 150 feet on the entrance? But they have that map, but it's subdivided. How is their intent?
They were asked to do that.
Because that's.
No, just to show where the building was.
Can I ask you a question? I don't know if you know this or not. So the buildings are already, the foundations are generally poured for those two. I don't know if you. Are the buildings, as they are being planned, since it's subdivided, right? Would those buildings satisfy individual lot requirements in the bylaw?
Under subdivision control?
Yes.
If they don't have the adequate frontage, no.
If they did do that.
If they subdivided.
If they had that, if they had the requirements that they did, if they did all the things they were supposed to do that we mentioned, is the plan that they've submitted, would that be okay?
Under subdivision control?
Yes. Okay. So even what they have, if they went to the planning board and got that approval, it still wouldn't be okay?
But if you look at the way, if the intent, it was not, the mere fact it was never approved under subdivision control tells you it's not a subdivision.
Right. So if those were individual lots, right? Those buildings are on individual lots, like the one over here by the golf course that they wanted to do, that we're making them put on individual lots. Would those buildings be on 40,000-square-foot lots?
I believe they are on 40,000.
So they would satisfy the setbacks and the frontage if they had individual lots like they are on that? I don't know if you know the answer or not.
I'd have to look at it.
Right. But if they could, if we could make a requirement that they go do that to continue this.
But then it's not a multifamily development. It's a subdivision. It's one and the other.
And I know that people might disagree with me on this. But it seems to me like the bylaw in 2000, when they amended it for multifamily complexes, wanted buildings on acre lots. And I think that's the intent of the bylaw. When they came in to do that project of where they golf course, they wanted to jam them all in. I think the intent of the bylaw is to, sure, if you want to have multifamily developments, go for it. The buildings you have need to be on 40,000-acre lots, like everything else in here.
40,000 square feet is for an individual, single-family dwelling on a subdivision. If you look at the bylaw, it specifically says one building per acre. An acre is 43,560. It's different, it's conflicting.
Okay. So whatever requirement is for a house, I think they want that on a lot requirement.
They have more, they have 43.
They have six buildings on 12 acres.
They've got 12 units on 12-plus acres.
And so if they went.
Six units on.
After the fact and got those approvals, I don't know if that was satisfied because they're on 150 in the beginning.
They can't get 150-foot frontage.
Right.
They can't because they only have 74 feet of frontage.
To put the road in.
To put the road in. The road is 50 feet, actually, then they.
And the road requirements were approved through the town for the safety of the town, for the ingress.
And they were approved by.
Ingress, planning, fire.
What was approved by planning?
A site plan review.
A site plan review. So the road itself going in was all.
The road itself was looked at. I believe the road was also sent out to separate engineering. Take a look at it.
Mr. Chairman.
Wait, yes, Mr. Trump.
Just to fulfill my duty to advise you, make sure this can be as clear as possible, that you can't create a road through site plan approval. You create a road through subdivision approval. So I understand that it got site plan approval. That did not create a road that creates frontage. So, you know, from a legal sense, that's not a road. It's like a driveway.
It is a driveway.
Mr. Chairman. It doesn't create frontage. That's the distinction.
So I would just like to say that the intent of the developer's engineer who came before the planning board during the site plan review spoke up in the meeting, in the meeting minutes, and said that each one of the lots would need variances. So they submitted the plan showing them as individual lots. That's what they submitted to you, that's what they submitted to the planning board with that site plan review. And he said in that meeting that each one of those lots would need a different variance. He said that. So the intent of that plan is to show individual lots and not a yield.
I believe under the planning board, it was approved as a lot to remain in common ownership to be used for a condominium complex.
The 12 acres as well.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear that the original plan submitted to the planning board showed the buildings on one lot without any divisions. At the request of Mr. Andrews Seniors, the chairman of the planning board, we were instructed to put those lots on there. Again, I believe the intent was to show the yield that we would meet those requirements. I don't see the bylaw requiring each unit on a 40,000-acre lot, because then you couldn't have a multifamily development with reference to a condominium. And with respect to subdivision control law, if you were building a subdivision road, you need to go through the subdivision control process to make sure that the road would meet all the requirements of subdivision control. This is a special permit, and in fact, your special permit provisions of 167-21 talk about the board granting a permit, found that internal circulation, utility systems, proposed use have been certified by the planning board to achieve the intent of the subdivision rules of the town of Halifax as applied by the planning board in exercising its jurisdiction over roads and utilities with reference to subdivision. So there's a recognition that, you know, through the special permit process, for creating this, and I don't know whether you want to call it a driveway, or you want to call it a road, it was to meet the intent of the subdivision requirements, but not have to comply. And indeed, was reviewed by fire safety and by the town's engineers to show that, in fact, it was safe for access into the ingress out of the development.
Mr. Chairman--
Yes, sir.
Hold your respect to Mr. Brodsky. That statement, last statement he made makes no legal sense whatsoever. The suggestion that somehow or other, through the special permit process, you approve a plan that shows a road, that there was an intent to satisfy the subdivision process? Your Honor, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Chapter 41, Section 81L says, "In order to build a building, you have to have frontage on a public way, a subdivision road, or a way in existence of the opinion of the planning board." You can't just pull frontage out of the air. So for some reason, the legislature has dictated the subdivision control law, and the legislature has also dictated the zoning enabling act, Chapter 40A. And what we are hearing tonight is, you're hearing, the building inspector is saying it's ambiguous. Your bylaw says you apply the stricter requirement. The stricter requirement, coming back to Mr. Huxton's statement, is 150 feet of frontage, and every building in a multifamily development is on its own lot. And you can have up to 10 units in the building. Whether it's condo or rental makes no sense. That's simply the, that's simply the use of the apartment. When you've got 11, 10 condo units or 10 rental units, that doesn't change the use. It's still a residential use. So the suggestions by Mr. Brodsky, that you somehow or other look behind the intent or whatever, I look to the black letter language of your decision, that you're granting a special permit as to use, but the applicant still has to meet every other provision of the Halifax bylaws, rules, and regulations, including subdivision approval and the 150 feet of frontage. And if, in fact, Mr. Webby was acknowledging to the planning board several years back, they need variance relief, well, if their own engineer is saying that in a public meeting, frankly, Mr. Brodsky's claim that there's some hardship here, this is what's called a bootstrap hardship. You create your own hardship, and then you say, oh, we have a hardship. We spent a million dollars, we've relied for two and a half years. You know, Mr. Chairman, simply, you could do it right the first way, or you could go back and do it again. Apparently, they didn't do it right the first way, even though they knew subdivision approval was required for six years.
Would you care to sum up or anything, or make suggestions representing us here, to you for guidance and direction?
This is my job. I mean, I've expressed the opinion about the frontage. I don't agree with this interpretation, but, you know, there has been interpretation, and interpretation expressed that because that Section 12A, I believe, talks about specific dimensional requirements for multifamily developments, that it doesn't talk about frontage. I suppose you, you know, you could interpret that, you could agree with Mr. Brodsky, that that indicates that there's no, that the 150-foot frontage requirement doesn't apply. I disagree with that, that that's the alternative argument. I think that's really what this comes down to. It's all, for me, it's all about the 150-foot frontage, really. Oh, and one other thing I just mentioned, in order to grant the appeals, since this is a five-member board, you need a vote of four members of the five-member board. The appeals, you start to--
Okay. Jerry, are you in this one? Wait, are you in this one, or are you out? Can you vote on this one or not? Okay. I just want to make sure. Any other comments from the board members? What is the pleasure? Where are we? I think--
Can I ask you something? The road was, I'd say the road was illegal. How come they didn't stop him when he was doing the road? Why didn't the town intervene and have that guy stop before he proceeded with this?
Right.
It's a permit for the road, right? They can just, they can do that.
They don't need that, right? They don't need a permit to build the road. I mean, they built the road, and they started, there's expenses here, they're along with this, for this project. We can't render it useless either.
Well, the two things that, to me, are, and we didn't bring this up, and I don't know if this has anything to do with this, but the two years were up. There's no question about that. Aside from that, they applied for the building permit, they got it, it was appealed, and they continued building anyway. And now they're in the position where they're asking us to feel bad that they spent a lot of money. And I do, because they were lying on that. But I don't know. It's difficult, but--
Well, our decision right now is to uphold the building inspector's decision or deny it.
Right, I was just going to read that, yeah.
That's what we're here for. We granted this permit.
Right.
We were here, we granted this permit. The planning board granted it, the zoning board granted it, and all the other board members agreed, the fire, police--
Engineers.
The engineers, they all came in and said, okay, this is a, go ahead. And these people came in, the building inspector issued the permits. Now, the whether we uphold it or deny it, that's our decision right now.
Right. Gentlemen, the only other thing too is, I agree with Kasai, I think, bottom line in listening to the different points of view. Whether we uphold Rob's decision, the building inspector's decision, or whatnot, it does leave Mr. Gordon another avenue for him to appeal. He can take it to land court, you know, if he wants to still continue to pursue it.
Or they could, if it is granted.
And what's that?
Or they could, if it is granted.
Exactly.
And the burden gets put on him--
Right.
Or the million-dollar developers.
Right.
I don't, I, yeah.
Right.
They're both going to find it out in court.
Right, exactly. It either continues getting built, or it does not, until the judge makes a decision. And they're going to be more financially in the hole if we decide to uphold the decision.
Right. Well, here, this is what-- Let me read this, so we have it in the record. "The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public meeting on Monday, July 10, 2017, at 7:15 in meeting number one of the town hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass., on the application by Gordon C. Andrews of 244 Elm Street, Halifax, Mass., on the administrative appeal of issuance of four building permits, 249 and 11 Amanda's Way, 264 Elm Street, Halifax. Said property is owned by Corey S. Merritt trustee. The party trust is shown on assessors map 14, PCL 9, C-W map 15, PCL 6, and 13, title reference book 29843, page 71. The applicant seeks to appeal the issuance of four building permits to the party trust of Pembroke to construct units 1, 2, 7, and 8 of Amanda's Estates pursuant to Mass. general law 40A subsection 815 in the town of Halifax zoning bylaw section 167-19 and 167-21A1. Area is zoned residential. Petition number 868." Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? We can vote on this tonight, we can, what is the pleasure? Oh, voting on it is Jerry, Bob, myself, Peter, and Kasai. Bob, you've been quiet.
A lot to take in.
Yeah. Board feels that we have to do more research, or whatnot, we can certainly do that, or we can accept a motion to either accept or deny petition 868. Do you feel comfortable, the members feel comfortable, that we do have enough information provided to make the decision, or do we need to continue to further investigate or obtain more information?
There's more to find out.
What's that?
I don't know if there's more to find out.
I don't know if there's more to find out, too. Again, as Attorney Huxton said, it would need a four out of five-member vote to uphold the petition, to nullify the building inspector's decision to grant the building permits.
By upholding the building inspector's decision, then they have the right to take the court?
Certainly.
Well, both of them do, okay?
Yes.
Right.
Do they still have a 20-day appeal period after we vote?
Yeah, had to go. What is the question, the answer to that? I believe so. My answer would, I would think it would be yes.
20 days after the written decision is filed with the town clerk.
The answer is yes.
Okay. Well?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to uphold the building inspector's issue.
By doing that, you-- voting against the petition 868?
Yes.
Just procedurally, there should be a vote, either for both of them together or one, because I believe there are two different petitions.
Yeah, there are.
I have 868 and-- was it 862?
868, 862.
Do we have a copy petition 869?
That will ask.
Oh, 868, 869. I have 868, which is what I read, and it sits in here. 869, I'll read this also. "The Halifax zoning board of appeals," thank you, "will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 10, 2017, at 7:15 p.m. in meeting number one of the town hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application by Gordon C. Andrews of 244 Elm Street, Halifax, on the appeal of the denial of request for zoning enforcement. Said property is owned by Corey S. Merritt trustee. The party trust is shown on assessors map 14, PCL 9, C-W map 15, PCL 6, and 13, title reference book number 29843, page 71. The applicant seeks an appeal pursuant to Mass. general law, Chapter 40A, subsection 7, 8, and 15, and the town of Halifax bylaw section 167-18 enforcement, 167-21A1 appeals, 167-19 building permits. Applicant appeals the May 24, 2017 denial by the building inspector Andrews, May 22, 2017, request for zoning enforcement. Area is zoned residential. Petition number 869." So we would be voting on, in both petitions, 86--
We can do them together.
You can do them together. Just the motion should include vote.
So if you, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Brodsky, do you know when this lot was originally deeded?
To my clients?
Originally made up, subdivided, I guess if you will.
1951. They were owned in its entirety, the 12-acre parcel.
They're not applying frontage.
167-10E, is that the one you're referring to? If you'd like me to read it?
Sure.
Just that book is like 10 years old, so--
Yeah, but it doesn't show that it's been--
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
"A lot or parcel of land having an area or frontage of lesser amounts than required in the following table four may be considered as coming within the area and frontage requirements of this section, provided that such lot or parcel of land was shown on a plan or described in a deed duly recorded and registered at the time of the adoption of this chapter or subsequent amendment heretofore, and did not at the time of such adoption or amendment adjoint other land of the same owner available for use in connection with such lot or parcel. Lots specifically exempt under Mass. general law, Chapter 40A, 5A, 7A, are also exempted from this chapter." Yes, sir.
That's a lot grandfathering provision, that the burden would be on the applicant to show that that would satisfy the requirements of that? And they haven't even made that argument.
Correct. Rob, did you research that, did the 1951, 54, 51?
They were in common ownership, they were in 1951, they remained in common ownership through the selling of the party trust.
Does that answer your question, Matt? Well, what's the pleasure of the board? We could entertain a motion to accept petitions number 868 and 869, and then vote on a recording with a yes or no. A yes vote would be to uphold the appeal and deny the permits granted by the building inspector, and a no vote would, in fact, enforce and uphold the decision from the planning, from the planning, from the building inspector.
That would be procedurally a good way to go, to do it.
Yes.
Motion, yeah, to--
To accept.
Grant the appeals and then--
And then vote yes or no on that.
If you don't get four votes, then you're not, you're denied.
Okay.
So make a motion to grant this as presented, correct?
For both--
For both--
Petition 868 and 69, 869. Do I have a second?
Oh, I'll just say it, just so everybody has it. I'll make a motion to accept petitions number 868 and 869 as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, obviously, I can't tell anybody what to do, but this is just procedurally to get it before the board. Then if you vote no, if it doesn't get four--
If it fails, it fails.
It fails. It's the same as bargaining against it.
Do I have a second? There's a motion on the floor to accept petitions 868 and 869 as presented.
Can we begin another motion?
No. No, we have to vote on this one, and then that would be denied, and then we could entertain another motion. I'm not mistaken.
Just again, second motion would not indicate any support for the appeals.
No, no.
It just gets it before the board, and then you vote as you may, as you will.
It either gets it or it doesn't get it.
Right.
It's either yes--
So you voted--
No, it dies.
To accept it, just puts it in--
Right.
Yes.
There needs to be four guesses.
Right.
So a yes is to uphold his--
So my motion--
A yes is just to accept the motion.
Either gets it or it dies, yeah.
You could second motion, then vote no.
Vote no, I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor that's been made-- Okay, there's a motion on the floor that's been made and seconded to accept the petitions 868 and 869. Now, just so we're clear, voting on this is Jerry, Bob, myself, Peter, and Kasai. It's going to require four yes votes to uphold the petition, in which case that would deny the building permit. And deny, a no vote against this would uphold the permits issued by the building inspector. So.
And deny the enforcement process.
So I'm going to call for a voice vote.
So a yes. A yes.
Yes.
Kills the building permit.
That's correct.
No. Issues the building permit.
That's correct. We good?
We're good.
Jerry?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
I vote no. So the petition is denied. One to three. No, wonderful. No abstentions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board.
Thank you. We need a five-minute break and we're... Mike's application in?
Yes, I submitted it to Charlie and I know a font similar.
Yes.
Could we get a copy of that? We have it run by the boards for our review and, or do we have it already? It's what? It's in the mail?
It's in the mail pool.
Mike, you should see, we have so much fun. What town were you on this?
You're going to miss some paper clips.
I'm Bert Gannon, by the way.
I'm Mike Jacob.
Mike, introduce yourself to everybody, please.
He knows me. You know what she knows, and you didn't shake my hand.
Duly noted.
You're my ride home.
What town were you on this?
I've lived in Halifax for 14 years. Prior to that, I was in Eastbridge, went up for 22 years. I was a member of the ZBA over there for about eight years, serving as an alternate, and as a member, and as a clerk, and as vice chairman. And in all that time, I never saw, I never saw it confusing. Eight years on the board as this meeting you guys just went.
Oh, you haven't seen anything yet?
Yeah, we've had some lately.
Some real good ones.
Lately, ever since you got the chairmanship, it's been business.
It hasn't been easy.
So I, I'm the former owner of Chapins Wood Products up in Whitman. We sold storage sheds. I sold the company, I sold the company a year and a half ago. I retired from there in May. So I always liked serving on the board.
Oh, good.
Up in the community, up in the applicants.
And you were eight years on the board?
Eight years, two different times. I was on for three years and I was on, print on a stamp for five years.
And all those years, you never ran into anything like this?
This one, well, we ran into some.
Oh, okay.
Well, there was three lawyers on the roll. None of them give you a definite answer.
Yeah, right. And then they're using each other's cases.
So, but I always enjoyed it.
You really get sympathy, what you're thinking.
Trying to help the applicant as you can, but do the right thing when you're on the individual hearing.
Oh, good.
And I didn't run away.
That's the most.
Before he rides, where he hit.
He made short of that.
You're not going anywhere.
Where do you live in Halifax, Wayne?
Delia Way.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Right off of 36.
Good. Well, I'd like to see if you could pursue that further. It'd be great to have another associate member on the board. It's always good to have different opinions and whatnot. You can see Dan contributes immensely to appreciate his opinion and whatnot. Maybe, should send a letter off to the selectmen. Maybe they can have Charlie review the process and consideration for another appointment to the board would be well appreciated. Because actually, this is probably the best board in town, I don't want to think about the others.
But I thought I'd come in tonight just to observe from.
That's awesome. Please, feel free, you have an open invitation to come in on the next one and please sit and observe, it'd be great. And then hopefully, we can get the process going and maybe get things rolling. If you would do that, send a letter off to the selectmen, that would be great.
Got it, yeah.
So for the process of the application. Awesome. All right, where are we? Where are we on?
Twenty minutes.
I'm sorry? Yeah, we have another set of minutes in here too. I think we, I missed the first time around. Is it the Monday? Was it the Monday, July 10 one? Is that the one we're doing now? Monday, July 10?
Yes.
All right.
Wow, you already got minutes done from the last.
She's good. It's been a while.
Yeah, I watched the whole thing.
Anybody get a chance to proofread these? It's her father, they look awesome. Nice job, Alana.
I read them online. They looked okay to me.
Yeah, I flipped them, flipped them live. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of July 10 as presented.
And a second? All those in favor of accepting the minutes of Monday, July 10, 2017, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Who's second here?
Kasai. Wow, these are really good. All right, bingo. Where are we now on our agenda? What else do we have? I have to get some.
Some of the mail. You can kind of bypass all of the stuff from 868, 869, but there was a couple things regarding Jennifer Choate. A decision letter from the selectmen.
Does that ever end?
I think it is.
Yes, I would appreciate that. Where's... What do we have officially? What do we need to do with them?
The building, I'm sorry, Pam. Animal control officer just left the property and there are no dogs. Can't listen to him.
Okay.
So the closing took place.
What was the date on that?
August 10.
August, that's when she went on? Because I had spoken to her before she was on... So there were two inspections, have I got that correct?
Well.
Because she said there were 25 when I spoke to her.
Yes, yes. So what happened was we had held another dog hearing. We had another duck barking complaint and the inspection was not complete because Ms. Choate didn't have the appropriate paperwork that she should have had for us to examine. And it was the Board of Secrets' decision to have the dog vacate the property on August 11. So today's inspection was just to verify that there were no dogs on the property.
Okay.
There is no dog on the property.
There are no dogs.
No personal dogs or anything?
No, the house is empty, so it appears that they did.
Do I take it then, was the board notified or even your board notified?
I just got the text just now.
That it has been under sale, it's been sold?
We haven't gotten the official report, although when I was at the property this morning, I was next door actually, and Ms. Choate had sent Norrie a text saying she was in New Hampshire. And then just now, as I was sitting here during your meeting, I got a text very kind that the animal inspector had done the inspection of the property.
Okay, does the, does the, this board have to notify them or anything in writing that the permits and everything are no longer void or in force or we are good?
I don't know, Kerry, do you?
There's no more permits, so.
That's what I mean.
They vacated the permit, so they're not in void.
So we're all good with that? We don't have to send an official letter, notice, great. All right, Aaron. I don't know, so we are... I'm standing, because I don't know what to do with mine. What else do we have on our agenda? Alana, what are we doing? We go to talent bank, email?
And then the last thing was just that anonymous letter regarding the sale of 127 Walnut Street. I don't know if you want to just look at it. Whatever.
Have you ever seen it?
It should be, it's, I think it's handwritten. It was printed? It is printed, okay.
That is an anonymous letter.
Basically, it was an anonymous letter sent to the zoning board, the Board of Selectmen, and the building inspector regarding 127 Walnut Street is not for sale. And somebody wrote to everyone saying that there was a pool in the yard that did not meet zoning requirements. Building inspector looked at it, we researched it, everything looks up.
Okay, the building inspector looked at the property or read the letter?
We looked at the property. We don't know who the letter came from, so we have no one to respond to.
Right.
So, but we did look at the pool, the property, and it looks to be in order. They had a pool permit from 1989 or something like that, so.
I don't know, normally it's the practice of the board if a letter comes in anonymous, there's no action normally taken unless you put your name to it or something.
Right.
I mean, that's on the building inspector. How he wants to handle that is, that's fine. There's no direction, I don't think necessarily from this board unless somebody else feels different. All right, good. What else do we have, Alana?
That's it?
That's it? That's all she dealt?
That's it.
All right, anybody else have anything else? Comments, anything? We all good? Couple of motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies, thank you for everything. Good to go.